Let's call to order the City of Eden Prairie Planning Commission meeting for Monday, January 12th, 2015. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for this evening's meeting, the first thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda itself. Any comments about the agenda or changes? Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The agenda's approved. Next, we want to do the same kind of thing for approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to, or are there any changes, first of all, to the minutes from our last meeting?
I have a question on page two of the minutes down at the, almost to the bottom of the page where it starts. Chair Stoltz asked Kleema, our planning director, in the third line of that paragraph, there is the word "correct proposal," and I, as I read it over again, I wondered if that was supposed to be "current proposal." Yes, so could you change it from "correct" to "current," I guess. And, of course, I have one more. On page four, at the bottom, where in the last paragraph where Chair Stoltz was asked about comments on question four when we were going over the TOD ordinance, I think the question was, "Do open spaces have to be publicly accessible?" You know, in other words, people getting, to go into those places as public spots where they can be there, as well as employees or whomever else. And the word that they have in the minutes, or that we have in the minutes, is "accessible." I think the appropriate would be "accessible," if you all think that's correct. That's it.
Okay. Any other changes or revisions to the minutes? Okay, do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
I would like to abstain.
I abstain.
Okay. Minutes are approved. All right, and the next thing on the agenda is coming from the planners' report area. I guess we're going to be looking, Julie, at a comprehensive plan overview tonight.
Correct. Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, in the 2015 work plan that the Planning Commission reviewed and ultimately adopted in December, I believe it was, one of the items that was on your list in first quarter for review was a review of the comprehensive plan. So this evening, because we don't have any land use applications to review, we're going to take this opportunity to take some time and review what is currently in place in the comprehensive plan. Our discussion tonight is intended, rather, to be a general overview of what the comprehensive plan is, why we have it, how often we look at it, that type of thing. And if you have more specific questions, staff can certainly take note of that, and we can bring back further information on any specific issues or concerns that you might have. So I've got a PowerPoint presentation here to share with you tonight. So as a part of the comprehensive plan review, the city most recently adopted a comprehensive plan in 2008, and it is a document that the city and all metro cities update every 10 years. So we will expect to update our plan again in 2018. So be on the lookout, as you know from your work plan, that by late 2015, we'll probably start that review and work on that document at that time in preparation for a 2018 adoption. But this evening, I wanted to start out talking about not only the comp plan, but also the city goals. The city council meets regularly to identify specific goals that it uses to inform and influence the organization overall, as well as decisions that are made and development that happens within the city. As you can see, these goals are fairly broad-reaching. They range from community well-being and safety, providing high-quality and efficient services, preserving and beautiful environment is another goal. And that one is, not only talks about, a lot of times when you think about environment, you think about just environmental features, but that goal also goes to physical development and historical components and aspects of the community as well. The fourth goal that's listed up here on the screen is a sense of community, providing recreational opportunities, amenities, programming that is collaborative and creates a sense of community that includes all community members as well. Innovative and sustainable practices. Eden Prairie is a very forward-thinking and progressive community. Those are, that's a very important quality that this city is very proud of, so we want to continue to maintain being on that forefront. And economic vitality is the last city goal that you'll find on this slide, talking about a diverse and prosperous economic base and continuing to provide that. So for instance, when the city sits down as a form of all of the departments and divisions within the city and creates our work plans for the next couple of years, all of our initiatives are tied back to these specific city goals. So the comprehensive plan is also a tool that is used to help guide our development and redevelopment over the course of the next 20 to 30 years. And these are the goals that the city would be looking to as part of the 2018 update to influence where we go from here and how we meet the goals that are identified.
Julie, let me just ask you, as you're going through this, if people have questions, do you want them to ask as we go through? Do you want to discuss this as we go through, or would you prefer to hold toward?
No, you can interrupt at any point if you have a question or clarification.
I think they're very much, Julie and folks, are really very much encouraging questions from any of us, or thoughts, or anything else like that that we'd like to bring up.
So the comprehensive planning process, as I mentioned earlier, is an undertaking that the city goes through every 10 years. It stems from the Land Planning Act that was adopted into state law in the late 1960s and established the Metropolitan Council. The Metropolitan Council is charged with providing a collaborative plan for the region in an effort to provide efficient services, collaboration between communities to make sure that there is an efficient use of services, and provision of all of the infrastructure that is needed in the metropolitan area. So the city created its last comprehensive plan in 2008. So this evening, we're going to talk about, just in general terms, what was looked at and what was reviewed as a part of that comprehensive guide plan update. So the purpose of the 2000 plan was to establish direction for the city over the next 20 years. In the interim since the previous comprehensive plan was updated, the city had undertaken a major center area study, which is generally around the mall area, and in 2006. And in 2004, Golden Triangle Plan was also taken into review and to account. So the 2008 comp plan incorporated those two studies and provided and influenced what was adopted into the comprehensive plan in 2008. And also, in 1995, the Metropolitan Land Planning Act was amended, so there were some initiatives that needed to be revised into the 2008 comprehensive plan to account for changes there. The 1995 Planning Act talked about land use mapping and reporting. There were some changes that needed to be provided as a part of that. It also relied on affordable housing and providing policies with regard to that, as well as regional transportation and sanitary service impacts, water resource impacts, and regional park systems. So as you may know, the Metropolitan Council is responsible for transportation, sanitary services, water resources, and regional parks. So all of those plans are reviewed, not only in Eden Prairie, but as a region as a whole. And the Metropolitan Council reviews each city's comprehensive plan to make sure that it meets the overall region's intent, as well as coincides with neighboring communities for provision of those services. The comprehensive plan is, as you may know, I'm not sure how many of you were on the commission at the time that that comprehensive plan moved through the process, but there is significant public involvement that occurs with a comprehensive plan update. There are workshops that happen with the Planning Commission specifically on land use as a part of that update. The major center area and Golden Triangle studies were reviewed with the Planning Commission and staff, also discussions on housing and transportation as a part of those special area studies. Demographic data is reviewed as a part of the comprehensive plan. Of course, there are updates to household forecasts, employment forecasts, population forecasts, that are all taken into account, and any new trends that may be emerging within those demographic areas. Land use changes, specifically in the case of the 2008 comp plan update, there were land use changes that were proposed as a part of the major center area, specifically the town center guiding that occurs around Prairie Center Drive and Singletary. That area was re-guided for town center in the comprehensive plan. And also, the Golden Triangle area studies talked about transitioning to provide some mixed-use opportunities within the Golden Triangle, specifically as part of the LRT that is expected to move through that area. And then also, the growth projections that, you know, every community sees growth projections over a 20- to 30-year horizon, and accommodating for the infrastructure and growth of the community in those specific areas. So the public involvement included an open house in November 2006 and April of 2007. There were joint council and commission meetings to discuss particular issues. There was, of course, public sharing of information through the website of providing draft chapters and presentations. It's my understanding that at the time that the 2008 comp plan moved through, that planning staff worked to establish, as much as possible, one of the meetings per month as a discussion or work session, if you will, to talk about whatever the topic of interest was as a part of the comp plan in order to keep that review continuing to move forward in conjunction with all of the land use applications that were, the Planning Commission is required to review by statute. There was also a housing focus group that met for a total of three meetings. The Metropolitan Council came out and provided some input to staff on the growth projections. And I believe the Metropolitan Council representative was just out here last fall, or maybe last spring, time tends to get away from me, to share with you the 2040 Thrive projections. And there was a brief presentation on their part to the Planning Commission to share that information, so we would anticipate doing that again with the update for 2018. These were the forecasts that were considered as a part of the 2008 comprehensive plan update. As you can see, there were the 2000 comp plan numbers, and then you have the 2030 forecast and the 2030 forecast by not only the city, but the Met Council, and there's a little comparison that goes on and discussion that goes on with that. You can see the change, the last column there provides the overall change expected by 2030 in population, households, and employment. So similar to this table, there is, with the Thrive 2040 update that the Met Council has provided to the city, updated forecasts in the areas of employment, households, and population that the Met Council provided to the city. The city has provided comment back, and now they are at a point where both parties have agreed on them for the time being. The city will continue to have opportunity to comment on those moving forward, but just to kind of provide a little updated information on that to you relative to the upcoming update.
I do have to ask you, I'm just curious, there's a lot in the overall plan about the future growth of the City of Eden Prairie. Based on your experience, what, if any, role does the Planning Commission play in that growth, or in monitoring that growth over time? Because you could say that a lot of what we're doing here is monitoring and making sure that new development of the environment in which we live fits the kind of standards we'd like to see the city represent. Do you think we have a role in terms of coordinating that with future growth, or do you think those things are somewhat separated?
I think the Planning Commission certainly has an opportunity to play a role in that. The 2018 plan that you will be a part of in the coming months and years sets out a 2040 forecast and works towards that. And of course, before we get to 2040, there will be other comp plan updates that will occur within that timeframe. In 2028, we'll be looking at the 2050 plan. So there's always an opportunity to take a look at, okay, we forecasted out to X for 2040. Maybe we're on track for that, maybe we're not, but we get a chance to take a second look at that with the next update. And the Planning Commission will certainly get an opportunity to play a role in that.
Okay, thank you.
Just questions, Chair? Just out of curiosity, do you have the numbers where we're at on that last chart for 2015? Just we're not quite halfway to 2030. I was just wondering how we are tracking with what we projected in 2008.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I believe we're fairly on track for the population and households, as well as the employment. For the 2040 numbers that the Metropolitan Council has proposed, I'm just working from memory here, but there's a little, there is additional growth, of course, that is expected with population and households, but there's also an emerging trend of change in the demographics of our households and the demographics of our population. So that is something that is, will take significant consideration as we take a look at the 2018 update. They're seeing fewer and fewer households with children. Of course, the population is aging. The demographics of the population in itself are changing, so taking a look at how that impacts household growth will be a significant discussion moving forward.
Julie, if you could put that graphic back up again, I think maybe one back from that?
This one?
Nope, the other one, in between. The one with all the populations and employment and everything.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Compared to other tier-two suburbs that are in proximity to us or that we're adjacent to, do they see, or does the Met Council project a delta that's negative in population change from one comp plan to the next? Because they're forecasting we reduce in our population numbers, and is there an agenda in mind trying to move people into the urban, like urban areas and less suburb sprawl? Or why do they see us projected as lower? And I'm just wondering if they project Edina to be the same as Seans Park, if there's some mechanism at play there.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, that's a fairly hefty question that would take a bit of numbers to support an answer, so I'd prefer to kind of have the opportunity to come back to you with specific numbers, because we are provided a significant amount of data from the Met Council. When the Met Council shares numbers with Eden Prairie, we also have an opportunity to see what the numbers are for all the communities within the metro area. So of course, there's a lot of number crunching that goes on to see who's impacted and how. So I would prefer to be able to come back to you with more detailed information on that, if that's...
And does anybody remember, I thought we had seen some newer numbers as well in our discussions around LRT and so on from the Met Council, and I thought they showed growth. So there may be a couple sets of numbers out there. I'm not sure if anyone else remembers those.
Yeah, whoever's dataset I guess you're looking at at the time, right?
Yeah, but it's a great question, because one would hope that the different data sets would, you know, operating on the one we believe in the most, so there'd be some consolidation. But I think, weren't there some numbers? I don't know if anyone remembers. Were there some numbers that were showing growth?
Yeah, there was, but it wasn't related to LRT. I think it was related to Met Council's directive. There was a directive of some sort that came out, I think February or March or something.
I think you're right, okay.
And it happened to be the same night as LRT update.
Okay.
I think it was a Met Council Future Forecast Directive.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think you're right.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, if I recall correctly, that was a conversation we had about the Thrive 2040 document that the Met Council has prepared, because that document also includes specific forecast numbers for each of the communities within the metro area.
I think you're right.
And so I would expect that to be another discussion topic as we continue to work through our work plan for 2015 and as we move forward towards the 2018 comp plan update. We'll be visiting that Thrive 2040 document many times.
It's an important question, though, because, of course, we're going to want to make sure that the numbers that everyone's projecting are going to actually occur, support the fact that we want to grow in the future, and so on, so...
Okay, so back to the current comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2008. The forecast methodology that was used there, because there were changes that were considered for the major center area and the Golden Triangle, the studies that were individual case studies that were done for those two specific areas were documents that were used to inform the 20, or excuse me, 2008 comprehensive plan update. The rest of the city was basically reviewed on a parcel-by-parcel basis to ensure that it was classified properly. Planning staff has already begun discussions about how we will plan to do that for the 2018 comp plan update to ensure not only that it's, there's consistency between comp plan and guiding, but also that what is actually on the ground is accounted for in the event that it is contrary to either one of those two. So we'll be beginning, we will be beginning very shortly to take a look at the city on a parcel-by-parcel basis.
Is that a parcel-by-parcel on both developed and less than fully maximized properties?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, it is on all parcels. We will be taking a look at the guiding, the zoning, and the actual use on the ground.
Is there any correlation between that and some of the tax changes that occurred with some of the classifications of properties, probably 2008?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I'd have to have a conversation with the assessor's office to know if there was any correlation with that. It's something I can certainly check into. So with the 2008 comprehensive plan, of course, some of the things that were considered were the new demographic changes at that time. There were revisions to all the chapters. Two new chapters were added, specifically the redevelopment and economic development chapter and the active community planning. Another significant change was including the aviation chapter into the transportation chapter of the comp plan. Previously, the aviation chapter had been more of a standalone chapter within most of the communities within the metro area, but in 2008, that was included into the overall transportation chapter. And so now, we're just kind of going to kind of walk through what each chapter includes in the 2008 comprehensive plan. Again, it's intended to be more of a general overview if we want to talk about specific issues. I'm happy to take your questions and provide additional follow-up as necessary. The first chapter is really just an introduction to the comprehensive plan. It talks about what the changes in demographic profile are expected based on what the latest census data was and other resources that have been published since the previous update. Chapter two identifies the visions, goals, and policies of the city overall. In 2008, of significance was the development of the town center and development of mixed land use in the Golden Triangle area, again, relying on the major center area study and the Golden Triangle study that we've mentioned previously. Also of note were senior housing and affordability housing needs, light rail alignment, and the preferred station sites. At that time, there was still discussion on where the preferred station siting should occur, economic development within the city, and then, of course, the active community planning. That was the new chapter that was included within that comprehensive plan update. Then in chapter three, you start to get into the more nitty-gritty, if you will. It's the specific land use. And the land use designation for town center was included in this particular comp plan update. If you'll notice, in this part of the map, the kind of red and orange hash area is the town center area that was identified with that update, and that property was guided for town center development. As a result, the town center design guidelines were adopted and are in place as well. Also, there was discussion about the redevelopment guidance for mixed use in the Golden Triangle, specifically related to the LRT station that was anticipated for the Golden Triangle, and how to accommodate mixed use with regard to inclusion of office in housing and retail, as well as employment opportunities in the Golden Triangle. Chapter four focuses on housing, specifically strategies to maintain the existing housing stock that the city has, policies to support development of medium and high-density housing in the Golden Triangle, again, in conjunction with station areas, and also in areas in the major center area. Chapter four also discusses tools and policies to increase feasibility of affordable housing within the community, as well as production and design of senior housing-friendly development. Chapter five focuses on transportation. Primarily, it identifies major roadway improvements, interchange improvements, county improvements, variety of improvements, again, in the major center and Golden Triangle areas. You can see those are common themes throughout the 2000 comprehensive plan, 2008 comprehensive plan update. As a part of chapter five, as we talked about, there was also, the airport was included, the light rail stations and locations, also discussions and policies with regard to southwest metro transit, expanding facilities and routes within the community, and also the bike and PED system mapping, which is something that, you know, the 2008 plan accounted for or discussed, but as you know, recently, the Planning Commission had the opportunity to review and weigh in on the bike and PED plan that recently the city undertook.
One of the things that's been interesting to me, having been on the Planning Commission for a little while, is, and I read the original documents that I was given about the town center and so on, but the whole concept of the town center to me, and its role in growth or its reason for being and so on, are not as clear as, maybe they should be in the future for everybody. What do we really mean by, and once again, I've read the documents that talk about it, and they did a nice job initially, but really, as we move on, what do we mean by town center? What's the purpose of it? What's the role? Are we talking about architectural differences? Are we talking about being competitive with other cities? It's just kind of understanding how some of these concepts, like a town center concept, tie into our overall thrust. And that, to me, isn't completely clear. It'd be interesting to discuss. Maybe other folks understand it much better than I do.
As a new member on the commission, I'd like to learn more about that, because that was all passed prior to...
Yeah, it's kind of like when CNN Money rated the City of Eden Prairie, the number-one city in the United States, under 300,000 residents, they pointed to a couple minor, what I thought were relatively minor weaknesses, and I didn't necessarily agree with. One of them was that we didn't have a downtown. I don't know if that's really a negative or not, but the question, the town center concept strikes me as something, someone was thinking a little bit about a downtown and slightly taller buildings and different architecture, and I guess the question is, why? And once again, I've read the documents, but as we look into the future, how does that concept play a role in the city? Does it play a role in growth, in attracting people to the city? What's that about? Just one question I have, not to be answered tonight, obviously.
I also speak to that, and Julie, all said thus far, I was just new to Eden Prairie, about the time that that town center study was underway. And remember, because I knew about it from another area of the metropolitan region where I lived, that the original town center shopping area had been in distress for some period of time, and how important it was, just from that perspective, I knew that there was something intensely urgent from the feeling that I got from reading things, not documents like you did, but just the press and the general news in the community. But I do think it bears on the future comp planning process, because the community continues to grow and to be different, and demographically, there are things ahead of us that are different than what that was like at the time that work was done.
And building on what you're saying, if you think about it, if I think back over the, about two years or two years plus that I've been on the commission, we don't talk about the town center concept in terms of anything that we're reviewing, and I don't know that we should, but it's just an example of probably we need as we work through the upcoming plan, all to have a better understanding, or at least some of us, like me, have a better understanding of the role of that concept in the future of the city.
In... And, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if I may, you'll continue to be a part of those discussions as the TOD ordinance that you have had the opportunity to review multiple times. As that continues to move forward, we will have conversations about how the TOD and town center have the opportunity to coordinate with each other, and if they should, and if they should, to what extreme and how. So those conversations will be ongoing, and you can expect to continue to be a part of those.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be great, because the discussion I had with Julie just a little bit beforehand was, because I didn't know the answer to this question, was to what degree do we on the planning commission need to be fully aware of the economic growth plan for the city? And to what degree does, do our decisions play a role in that? And maybe it's, maybe it's a minor role. I don't know, but just something I was curious about.
Chapter six of the 2008 comprehensive plan focuses on utilities. Specifically, it discusses the additional wells that would be needed to provide water service over the expected growth that is contemplated with the 20, or 2008 comprehensive plan. Also talks about conservation and peak use reductions to achieve projected demand. That was projected at that time. Chapter seven of the comp plan discusses community facilities, also known as parks and recreational opportunities. The new active-use parks that are proposed as part of redevelopment areas were considered as a part of that, as well as improvements to trail and open space networks and in response to increased interest from not only residents but employees and visitors to the city as well. Also, as a part of that chapter, there was discussion of creation of a town square park and supporting trails and sidewalks in the town center. So again, getting to that town center discussion that there are so many questions about, as well as the dedication of an open space corridor with trails that links wetlands and conservation lands between Bryant Lake and the Nine Mile Creek Conservation Area, also known as the Golden Triangle. So it will be interesting as a part of the 2018 update to see which of these plans have continued to move forward from 2008, what connections have already been made, and those that still need to be reviewed and taken into consideration. Then chapter eight is one of those new chapters that we discussed earlier in the discussion this evening. It's the redevelopment and economic development chapter. It primarily looks at balancing growth against the infrastructure and how we accommodate that. There, of course, is limits to the infrastructure that's in place, but how do we use that and accommodate additional growth and what triggers the need for additional infrastructure? Promotion and support for diversified and strong business community, of course, looking to put in place policies that will support that continued vitality. And then chapter nine was the second new chapter provided in the 2008 update, talking about community active, active community planning, rather. Specifically, topics that were considered were air quality, accessibility, open space locations, destinations and land use mix, and then physical safety and mobility. Looking at, this is a chapter that really lends itself to the current discussions with regard to active streets and active living that you see as initiative that many communities are taking a look at, and there's opportunity to enhance this chapter with the 2018 update as we continue to move forward with that. And then chapter 10 is the, probably the shortest chapter in the 2008 comprehensive plan. It is the implementation chapter. It specifically talks about the town center design guidelines that were, that are intended to guide development projects in the town center, as well as a town center ordinance that would allow for higher density, higher height, mixed-use development. Of course, there are other implementation tactics that are considered with that, but at the time, those were kind of the highlights of the implementation chapter. So that's just a very broad, broad-brush overview of the 2008 comp plan. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. I've taken some notes from comments that you have made, but if you have other specific questions, I'm happy to listen to those and comment as, as I can.
This question, looking back at the plan, was there anything that, like lessons learned, that you noted that we could have done better, or in the process, or the results, or anything to keep in mind in this next update that you want to change?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, because the comp plan essentially is a working document, it's not something that we, you know, we put on the shelf and forget about. We use it every day, and there are considerations or characteristics of the community that are continuing to evolve. You know, we will certainly be taking a look at all of those demographic changes. The LRT, of course, will be a significant impact with the 2018 update, and we, of course, have more solid information about that at this point than we did in 2008. All those station areas have been identified where, and alignments where they previously were not is solidified in 2008. So we will be able to get a better handle on some of those types of issues as we continue to move forward.
Other questions? Feel free. I mean, I think this is, we appreciate Julie going through this, but if there's anything that any of the commission members need to better understand for their future role, please feel free anytime to ask questions. I guess I, based on what I've seen, it strikes me that there are almost kind of like two, two large concepts here. See if anyone agrees with me on this. One of them is, is the planning commission and its role in helping to ensure that the environment that we all live in, in the city of Eden Prairie, is the kind of environment we want to live in, and that that will continue into the future. So that's almost like the environmental context. But the other thing that's interesting to me is this whole issue of growth versus slow growth, fast growth, what, I mean, that whole issue of growth and what role the environment and everything else plays in that growth. So one could think, well, if you're going to talk about a town center and you had it in your original plan, is there a need for us to be monitoring our progress toward the goals of that town center over time? So if we were to ask ourselves today, where are we in terms of the development of the town center versus where we would hope to be, be an interesting question. I certainly, I certainly don't have the answer. So what I'm just interested in, and I don't, would love to hear from the other commission members, is how this whole growth thing, the idea of growth for the city ties into our role and the environment that we're trying to protect as a commission?
I might have a question for Julie on that. What are the determining coefficients that have been instrumental in creating the growth from the last comp plan update until, so 2020 to 2030, based on those projected numbers?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I think primarily what we see as a part of the 2040 forecast that the Met Council and the city have worked on is, again, the trending changes and demographic changes with regard to household size, age composition. Of course, it's an aging population. We're seeing smaller household size overall as that population ages. We're also seeing a change in household composition. Those are trends not unique to Eden Prairie, but of course, metro, metro-wide and nationwide as well. So Eden Prairie is also entering into a phase where we're largely developed, and we will continue to see development, but it may be more of a redevelopment instead of the field development, if you will, that, that you see with new and emerging suburban edge. We'll begin to see some redevelopment as a part, especially with the LRT line coming through some of those areas are expected to redevelop as a part of that.
What's the latest on the Presbyterian Homes site?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff has had some outreach with the Presbyterian Homes group. They're continuing to work on their campus in Wayzetta and are letting us know that we are, the city of Eden Prairie's project is next on the list, but has not, they have not yet identified a specific timeline of when they would expect to begin construction.
You didn't get any indication from them that they're optimistic about the future? You know, in the next five years, 10 years, or anything like that?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I wasn't a part of that specific conversation, so I wouldn't have been able to glean any optimism or not from that conversation. All I, all I can communicate is what I've heard is that they weren't able to make a commitment at this time, other than that Eden Prairie is next on the list as they continue with their progress in Wayzetta.
What I'm going to mention is, is just a little bit of an answer maybe to your question, and it's fully public because I got, just for, just for my own interest, I put my name on the waiting list for Presbyterian Homes. Maybe I'm in the right age group for that, too, so I don't know, but, but I did put my name on the waiting list, and I got a letter in the mail, oh, it was probably about a year and a half ago, which talked about just exactly what Julie had said, that they wanted to develop the property in Wayzetta first, and that the income from that would help, and that this would be an X priority. But I thought it was interesting in the context of the letter that they said, since our current properties, the two properties that are on that acreage today are coming to the end of their useful shelf life, we will want to move ahead in the future. So one would think, if that's the view, that the current properties are coming to the end of their useful shelf life, then unless, if you're going to stay in business on that overall, in that overall area, you'd have to do something.
Yeah, see, I'm not sure if it would be, it would be advantageous, but I'm not sure if it's the cat, you know, or the tail wagging the dog. We want to implement the appropriate tools and vehicles for the proper redevelopment, like press homes and other 55 and alive demographics, because that's the growing trend, or that's the largest population that's going to sprout. And so do we implement those tools first, or do we wait till they come in? And we have Presbyterian Homes, which is a pretty high-density area, but we don't have LRT going anywhere near them. So, you know, it's kind of, which direction do we want to, which do we want to head?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff is maintaining contact with Presbyterian Homes on a regular basis in order to stay abreast of what their plans are.
Where the rubber, an example where the rubber hits the road, I think, a bit between these two ideas of environment and growth, is when we begin to talk about the tiered development around the LRT stations. Because I remember in that discussion, one of the questions that I was curious about was, well, what's the role of that first tier? Is it to get people excited to get off the trains and enjoy and spend money in the city of Eden Prairie? There were some questions about what those different tiers were really all about, and that kind of development in the future may involve both, you know, the environment we want and also help in the growth of the city overall, if that's a goal, and to what degree that's a goal. So how about other commission questions?
I have one question that we were talking about, the town center, and then bringing into not only development but redevelopment. And there was a discussion, gosh, back last fall, maybe summer, that identified specific areas for redevelopment, and how does that fit into this, this plan? It looked at, you know, continuing one of the streets that through by Costco and, like I said, redevelopment of specific properties in that town center block.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, with the 2008 comprehensive plan update, that comp plan identified the town center area and guided properties for town center. Then the implementation piece of that is actually zoning the property on the ground for town center, and none of those properties within the town center guiding have yet to be reguided town center. They had established zoning at the time. That zoning has continued, and there haven't been any redevelopment proposals, if you will, so there have not been any rezonings that have occurred to actually implement the town center design guidelines. So as a part of the TOD ordinance coming forward, there is a bit of overlap, if you will, between the TOD ordinance and the town center. So we'll continue to have discussions about how those two can and will coordinate together, and if that makes sense, and how.
How about other questions from anybody? Any thoughts, questions?
I have an observation more than a question. I've been reading lately a little bit about some of the changes in communities somewhat close by Eden Prairie, some of them in Scott County, where a lot of issues regarding development have come up recently. And just curious, it appears that those communities may be growing at a faster rate, and now with the new highway, bridge connection that's going to be, you know, finished in a short period of time. Has any, does any of that ever enter into the staff discussions as you're trying to look at the next comp plan process to see what's happening elsewhere, but on our, you know, our immediate horizon that might have an impact or that we might want to affect?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the comprehensive plan, of course, not only the city of Eden Prairie, but all cities within the metro area will be required to update their comprehensive plans as a part of the 2018 update. And one of the requirements of any city, any time a comp plan is either proposed or amended, is that there is notification to all adjacent communities. So for instance, over the last, I don't know, two weeks, I think the planning division has seen a comprehensive plan amendment for Bloomington come across our desks, as well as one for Edina, because we have an opportunity to review and comment on those so that we have an opportunity to see, does it impact our community? And if it does, how? How would we want to respond to that? So as a part of our comp plan update, we will be shipping it out, if you will, to the adjacent communities for their review and comment, just as we will get all of the adjacent communities coming into us to have an opportunity to take a look at and comment on.
That's good. Because there seems to be a lot, as an example, I'm over there fairly frequently, there seems to be a lot of interesting development going on in the southern portion of Edina and on the northern edge of Bloomington and so on, and of course, the mall and everything else. So, I mean, another concept over time is if the overall metro is growing, are we getting our share of growth? Do we want to get our share of growth? And the reason this growth thing, to me, is important is because, as an example, if we're reviewing some kind of development in the town center area, would the architectural standards, the height standards and all that, based upon the town center concept, be differentiated from those standards in other parts of the city of Eden Prairie? And I don't know the answer to that question. So that's why I thought this could be a great learning experience. I know there's a lot I have to learn, so. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Anything else? Okay. Julie, thank you very much for the work that went into that. Certainly appreciate it. I think next on the agenda, you want to talk a little bit about the workshop coming up?
Correct. On January 20th, which is next Tuesday, the city council will be holding its annual work session with all advisory boards and commissions. So at that work session, each board and commission has the opportunity to review what it has accomplished in the previous year, as well as highlight what is on its work plan for the upcoming year. So Mr. Frank and I will be working to prepare a brief presentation to share with the planning commission at that work session, highlighting what the planning commission has accomplished in 2014 and what was identified as items for review on the 2015 work plan. All of the planning commissioners are invited to attend. It is held downstairs in the Heritage Rooms, starting at 5:00. Because there is a light lunch that is served, please, or dinner, excuse me, that is served, please RSVP to Lori if you intend to attend that so that we have enough goodies for everybody.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the time you put into tonight's discussions, Julie. With that, are there any members' reports tonight? Okay. Any continuing business? Any new business? Okay, I think we're close to adjourning. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.